Good evening and welcome to the March 8th regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. We're holding this meeting as an in-person hybrid in order to be compliant with the Governor's Order N-522, as well as the Department of Health's guidance in the use of face masks. Although the wearing of face mask is no longer required in City Hall, it is strongly encouraged and appreciated, as well as social distancing. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are three ways you can do it. While on your computer, if you wish to speak during the public comment portion of any item, click on the Raise Your Hand icon on the right-hand side of your screen. When the public comment period opens, you will be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you are on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by calling the number and meeting ID, all of which are shown at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 to let the clerk know you wish to speak. Again, when the public comment period opens, you will be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you are in attendance, you can also approach the microphone and make your comment. Again, you'll have three minutes. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loia, can we get a roll call?
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Figueroa?
Present.
Commissioner White?
Present.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
And Chair of the State Elcock?
Here. And at the staff's table, we have David Loia, our Director of Community Development.
And note that Commissioner Tagney and Commissioner Davies are not yet in attendance.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the commission?
Yes. There are some attendees raising their hands on Zoom. And I'll just note that the way that the council meetings have been working, and it's been working pretty well, is that they'll take all of the attendees on Zoom first and then go to attendees in the audience. Obviously, we don't have anybody in attendance tonight at this point. So we'll go ahead and start with those who are online. Go ahead, Patricia.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I'm representing the community group Responsible Growth Arcata, and we would like to present the following for your consideration. During the City Council's Goals Study Session on March 1st, there was a discussion of whether the Gateway Plan should be developed as a specific plan, as it was originally proposed. A City Council member requested that the Planning Commission discuss which of the two approaches, either a specific or an area plan, would be more appropriate, and also was curious to when and why it changed to become an area plan. Another council member voiced the need for more understanding and information about the differences between these two planning approaches, and also requested that it be discussed by the Planning Commission. For example, under Statute 65451A2, a specific plan would be required to identify the major infrastructure components needed to support planned land uses. Community plans and area plans are not required to contain similar analysts. So in our view, our thorough identification of the infrastructure necessary to support the Gateway Plan is far too important of a topic to defer. We feel that an honest and clinical discussion of the trade-offs of these two approaches will be informative for the Commissioners, but the City Council, and also for the community. So our group, RGA, respectfully requests that the Chair address the concerns of the council members and place this on the agenda for the next Planning Commission meeting on March 22nd. So we just want to thank you also for your dedication and service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Do we have anyone else? Nope. All right. Onto the consent calendar. The only item that we have is the minutes from February 22nd. Do any of the Commissioners need to pull that item, or can we get a motion to approve?
I think there did appear to be an error, and so I'd like to pull it.
Okay. We're going to pull that, the minutes. What was the error?
It was in the public hearings where it said that a motion was by Commissioner Davies and also seconded by Commissioner Davies, which I don't think is correct. And I wouldn't have caught it except for the fact that I couldn't remember who made the motion, and I couldn't remember who seconded it.
Okay. Would you like to...
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. It should have been a motion by Tagney and seconded by Davies.
Thanks very much.
Would you like to make a motion?
In that case, I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
With that change.
Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Mayor and a second from Commissioner White. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Figueroa?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair of the State Elcock?
Aye. So motion approved to approve the consent calendar. Now we will move on to public hearings, of which we have none, and so we'll move on to business items. Local coastal element update. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight, and I do have a little bit of setup. We started our in-depth review of the local coastal element portion of the local coastal program at your last meeting, and so I wanted to make this a regular topic as we alternate between the long-range planning documents that we're working on currently, and to give the commission and the public ample time and opportunity to comment and weigh in. One of the biggest issues that we'll be dealing with in this local coastal program update, obviously, is sea level rise and policy around sea level rise. And so I wanted to focus tonight on history of the sea level rise response in the City of Arcata, and then to bring that together with the recommendations that are made in the draft, local coastal element, and then dig into that policy into any detail that you see fit. So I'll just start with this PowerPoint presentation, Sea Level Rise Response. I will note that the City Council took this matter up at their last meeting as well, and so it would be good to go and watch that meeting as well. There's some background in that meeting that I don't provide in this meeting that would also be useful for Commissioners, both who have heard this before, but it's been a while, as well as those of you who are new and maybe haven't heard this before. So I wanted to key you into that. Okay. So I'm going to start off with just sort of an overview of some of the work that we've done in the past, just to orient us to what has been done before and where did we get direction for the draft that's before you today. So this picture was from a PowerPoint presentation we did, I want to say, in 2016. And kind of the concept here, this was from a flood, I believe, in the '80s, I want to say, maybe the '70s. And you can see that the flooding is fairly extensive. It covers parts of Highway 101. Here, you can see in the mid-ground, the flooding backs up behind the overpass here and into Old Arcata Road, and gets into the Arcata Sports Complex. So this is pretty extensive flooding. And we kind of look at this as, quote-unquote, "a blast from the past" and fast-forward to the future, because these same extents are projected in our vulnerability analyses as being potentially subject to flooding in the future. Okay. So I'm going to walk you, the next couple of slides are actually from the April 30, 2018 City Council Planning Commission Study Session. And the objective of the study session outlined here was to really do a recap on the work that we had done since 2016, work in earnest on the local coastal program, as well as to seek direction. And this meeting is one at which we ratified the direction that staff was recommending to move forward with this planning effort. So we identified sea level rise refresher, looked at background documents, talked about how the coastal program works, looked at some of the land use policies, and then talked about the implementation plan. We rehashed that the sea level rise projections, again, show extents up to approximately where you saw on that first picture I showed you. And one of the emphasis, one of the points we tried to emphasize was that sea level rise is not just a bayfront issue. Right here in this portion of Arcata, where the creek comes by, Villa Way, you can see that sea level rise impacts up to the blue portion here will impact these neighborhoods and these drainage systems when sea level rise is at a certain point. Already, these drainage systems are partially tidally influenced, and so as the sea level rises, they'll get more and more tidally influenced further and further up the reaches. So that was one of the main points, that we were looking at this high level. Back in 2016, we gave an overview of climate change science in general. We talked about these vulnerability analyses that were using this bathtub model, where you basically just fill up the bay to a certain elevation and see what does that look like on the map, which has some limitations that I'll talk about in a little bit. We looked at different projections, and there are several different projections even today, depending on your risk tolerance. And then we talked a lot about how we had done some work, looking at what does the current levee system around Arcata look like? What are the elevations? And so we can dig into that in a little more detail if you're interested. But we already have a protected system. The dikes, if they went away today, the tidal floodwaters would come into about the inland extents that you see on this image to the left here. In 2017, we advanced this work a little bit further, and we had put forward this concept of having a phased adaptation strategy, this measured retreat, where we would slowly walk back from areas that were subject to potential inundation in the future, focusing on, first, releasing assets that were lower protective value and/or had already been planned for accommodation, like McDaniel Slough. And to focus on this, what we at that time were calling the urban peninsula, or the protection peninsula, which now is just referred to as Zone 1. So the idea being that this area down South G&amp;H Street that has the wastewater treatment plant at the very tip, lots of industrial uses and commercial uses, lots of residential uses, and a couple other commercial and industrial uses off to the west here, that those would be subject to some form of protection over the course of time. This little graphic in the center here does some of the back-of-the-napkin estimates that we had been using to try and identify whether this was a valuable consideration, an area that was worth protecting. In short, the image here shows you that there were approximately $141 million worth of assets in $2017 at the time, and that would cost a total of $15.4 million to protect to 18 feet. And so this was, as we were presenting at the time, a fiscally feasible and reasonable trade-off between those two value systems, up to that point at least. I'll say just by way of passing, an alternative concept, one that's been promulgated by many, is that, well, if this is in a mapped inundation zone, why don't you just start defusing of these properties now? Why don't you start pulling uses back and start the adaptation process today? Why wait? And so we can talk in a little bit more about that in detail when we're looking at some of these other maps. But we contrast with that. We say, no, we want to ultimately, as long as it's feasible to protect our city boundaries, our existing uses, that we want to continue to do that, but then also plan for a shift in those uses so when it's time to retreat, it's easier to do so. And we'll talk a little bit about that. We talked about the different strategies on the one end of the spectrum for protection, accommodation in the middle, which would be either accommodating floodwaters or designing so that they are adaptable, and then retreat on the far other end of the spectrum. But that adaptation is ultimately a spectrum of activities that we would use for different asset types, depending on their risk tolerance and on the threat to those assets. And so, for example, we don't want to cite a new critical facility, a new emergency room hospital, in an area that's going to be subject to future inundation or potentially tsunami hazard, but it may be okay to cite some new businesses in that area. And so that's kind of the approach that we took. We had, over 2016 to 2018, a ton of public outreach. One of the things that I'm proudest of, because I feel like our little pilot project that we were doing here on King Tide, photo documentation was picked up by the Coastal Commission, and they now have a statewide program where coastal communities all across the state are doing this. I don't know that we had any influence over them rolling that program out, but I know for a fact that we did it first, so I'm going to claim that we did. But we had a lot of public engagement through 2016 to 2018, and took a lot of that information that was ultimately baked into the document that you have before you tonight. We also entered into a couple of contracts to get more specific resolution on our vulnerability, our responses, what the local sea level rise predictions would be. So we worked with Alderon Laird, and he focused mostly on vulnerability of assets. And we also worked with Northern Hydrology Engineering, and they worked mostly on sort of replicating the Ocean Protection Council-approved methods for estimating sea level rise projections, but then based them on local data so that we have real localized Arcata Bay sea level rise projections, which has been very helpful trying to do our adaptation planning. I'm going to run real quickly through sort of the pitch that we've been giving, or the education pitch that we've been giving on this to help us make decisions. Focusing on these white circles, you see Old Arcata Road, the bend at Jacoby Creek there, the pretzel on 101 to 255, and our wastewater treatment oxidation ponds. Those are a point of reference for the following maps. So in these, we're looking at current elevations on the right here. This is LiDAR elevation, so going from cool colors that are low to hot colors that are high. I don't have specific elevations here, but essentially, you can see this break-in slope at about the yellow point, and then it jumps up into the red elevations. That mirrors over real well with the 1870 shoreline. And so you can see our wastewater treatment plant, the pretzel, and Old Arcata Road in each of these. And you can see that they're all in low-lying areas. The vulnerability analyses, not surprisingly, show that those areas would be inundated with future sea level rise. Now, I just want to draw your attention to the fact that the inundation footprint doesn't extend much farther beyond that yellow topographic line that I showed you in the last image. The other thing I want to share with you, and it's a little bit more poignant in the upcoming slide, but that these inland extents, again, would be about the same if we breached the dikes today, as they will be with 100 years of sea level rise projected. So that's an important thing to think about. There are some communities where they're experiencing radically different shifts in the way that the tide influences their communities that have far-ranging implications on built infrastructure, built environment. I'm not saying that we're not going to have that experience, but what I am saying is that even with six feet of sea level rise, there's not much of a difference between the current inland extent of tidal flooding and projected future inland extent of tidal flooding. What that suggests to me is that we have, as opposed to some other communities, we have a little bit more tools in our tool belt on how we respond to these conditions, these future conditions. Okay. So this is a map that is in your current LCP. It was updated for tonight's agenda, and you should have received in your packet, a printed eight-and-a-half-by-eleven copy, or 11-by-17, I'm not sure which. I guess it's eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, copy of a full-color map. And what we've done here is we've shown, instead of as many folks are used to thinking about it, what's the elevation at a given time, we're showing just the elevations with a certain amount of sea level rise applied to it. Now, there's a couple of reasons for this approach. Number one, sea level rise projections are constantly shifting. We're always hearing news about an updated projection, and now what was 2030 is now going to happen in 2025, and so on and so forth. So the projections are always going up, and they're always getting worse. I think there's some usefulness in thinking about when will certain things happen, but there's a lot more utility in thinking about at what elevations do various things get inundated? How long? What are the frequencies of those inundations? Are there other alternatives than just retreat that could help manage those inundations? So what we've shown here in the blue, again, is our current tidal prism. So this is basically our mean annual maximum water. This is our average king tide, is what you're seeing in blue here. Now, everyone knows on the king tides that we don't get flooding up into the baylands, we don't get flooding on the Christie property. Certainly, there's no flooding into the oxidation ponds, and South G Street is not flooded. So you have to ask yourself, well, if the inland extent of today's tidal flooding would go to this point, and if I don't see that kind of flooding today, then what's going on? Well, the what's going on is that we have levees in place that manage those tidal waters. 100-plus years ago, levees were placed all around the bay, reclaiming those tidelands, and they were put into agricultural production. So those reclaimed former tidelands are all behind that defensive structure. Our South G&amp;H Street is also part of that defensive structure. Ultimately, Samoa is part of that defensive structure as well. And so it was instructive, I think, in our local coastal element to put this image in here to show you the difference between current inland projected extents, based on this bathtub model, where you just fill up to a certain elevation, and the projected future inland extents if you give it three feet and six feet of sea level rise. The USGS is actually working on a project called Cosmos right now, where they're mapping a little bit more sensitively sea level rise inundation that does take into consideration those intervening geographical features. And so we believe that sometime in the next year or two, we'll have better modeling for this. In addition, we're looking to apply for a Coastal Commission grant soon to do a little bit more sophisticated modeling for our area. But for right now, this is the state of the art. This is the best we can do in terms of representing this graphically. Now, one thing that's important to note here, that just because you see a map like this doesn't mean that's going to be the daily condition. So this blue area is our mean annual maximum water. So this is the king tide average. This happens a couple of times a year. Certainly, the tides around the king tide are also very high. Some of them approximate and approach the king tide. And so there are going to be periods or frequencies when we'll experience this level of inundation. But to address that, we put forward the, in the upper right-hand corner of that map that we inserted into your packet tonight, the base year, which is 2012 in our Northern Hydrology Report, along with the mean maximum monthly water, so the average high tide, recognizing that the tides follow a seasonal pattern and that they're higher in the winter than they are in the summer. The mean annual maximum water, so that's the king tide, we put the 100-year event, and then the 2,100 probability of exceeding that elevation. And so in this table, it's important to note that, for example, with a half a meter of elevation, that would be 10 feet for mean annual maximum water, which is slightly higher than our current mean annual maximum water. And there's a 54% probability that by 2,100, we'll have that elevation. So 50/50 chance by 2,100. Half the future realities have this level of inundation, half don't, half have less. To get to one meter by 2,100, there's a 2% probability of that occurring. And so in all likelihood, and this is, again, these numbers are with what's called RPC 8.5, so the higher emissions scenario for sea level rise projections, there's a 98% chance we're going to be less than what's projected at a meter by 2,100. So we're just trying to introduce some concepts here, that it's more than just looking at a map and seeing like, oh my gosh, the floodwaters are going to be up to that elevation? We should really do something now. We want to make sure that we're taking into consideration the probability that that will happen, and the probability that those impacts will occur, and really right-sizing those for the types of decisions that we make about the policy that we implement now, and how we roll out our adaptation strategy overall. So just to give you a real concrete example of what that looks like, planning for a meter of sea level rise by 2,100 with a 0.2% probability makes a lot of sense if you want to cite a hospital. You don't want to put a hospital in harm's way, even if there's a remote chance that that's going to be in harm's way. You want to plan for putting those in the most logical places that will not be impacted by natural disasters, will not be subject to regular inundation, and not be serviceable in the future when you need them. Someone taking and deciding to build their own home in that area, if there's a 2% probability that that home will still be viable and standing in 70 years if they build it today, they're likely to say, that's an acceptable risk to me. I can accept that return on the investment type of risk, that in 70 years, the home that I build today will still be standing. And if we go beyond that, if it hits beyond that 98% probability that it'll be standing, and I get into that 2% range, and in fact, my house is flooding, then we have policies for requiring that they remove that house. But it's on a different order of magnitude between citing public facilities or critical facilities and individuals' decisions about their own finances. We also leverage this concept in some of the policy language that ultimately led to a commercial visitor serving overlay in the coastal zone that we'll look at in a minute, reasoning that if we bring forward zoning types that allow for investment in new uses that will shift those use patterns so that you don't have uses like homes where people are going to lose their homes, or the salvage yard I'd mentioned last time, that if they can clean up that salvage yard and turn it into an RV park, then it'll be much, much easier in the future to implement an adaptation and retreat strategy that allows for the continued use of that property, instead of just saying you can't build anything out there. Okay. So everyone wants to know, when is this going to happen? And we talked a little bit about this already, but the projections go everywhere from low with bandwidth to extremely high, and they're all over the map, and it really depends on what the future scenarios are. Most of us in the planning world are using this RCP 8.5 I mentioned. It's the increasing emissions scenario. It doesn't rely on reduction of emissions out to, say, 2050. Right now, we've know, when we, right now, we've currently got about as much greenhouse gases baked into the system that we're going to get a certain amount of, of sea level rise anyway. And then beyond that, that's really where policy can change, you know, large-scale national and, and global policy can change that trajectory, but we're not counting on that. We're using this RCP 8.5. Whoops, why am I not advancing? Oh, it's a problem when you have two computers. Okay, so when is it going to happen? We took a look at these three scenarios that are, you know, and this is just a cartoon representation of the three likely scenario with sort of the extreme end and the lower, lower end of the projections for that, that RCP 8.5 scenario. And looking at the elevations that would occur in 2020, 2030, 2050 and 2,100. And this is the typical way of looking at it. And more often than not, you know, folks will tell you, well, you know, plan for the worst and that way, you know, things will, if things get better, then it's great. Problem with that thinking is doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration, if you plan for the worst and you tell someone you can't invest in your home, then you lose all of that investment that would have happened. You lose all that livelihood, that vibrancy, that, that community space that you could have had in, in the coastal zone during that timeframe. And so we want to make sure that we're right sizing the projections for the types of uses. But, but if we look at these, you know, typically people would look at this and say, hey, look, there's a huge difference between maybe 11 feet, if this is feet in elevation and this is time on the bottom here, you know, 11 feet or 12 feet with this lowest case scenario and 15 feet with this highest case scenario, you know, that's a big difference. So around this time, we started thinking about, well, what happens if you project these out way into the future? And instead of thinking about the time when this is going to happen and being uncertain based on the projection that you're using, what if instead we said, look, there's a, you know, an elevation that we can protect to? In this graphic, we're just saying arbitrarily that it's 18 feet of elevation. We can build levees around the city of Arcata and protect to 18 feet of elevation. And then you ask yourself, well, when do we hit 18 feet? Instead of looking at 2,100, am I at 11 or am I at 15? We would be looking at, is this going to happen in 2,100 or is it going to happen in 2,200 based on these projections? And so sort of turning the, the timeframe on its head a little bit to think a little bit differently about the uncertainty in these projections. If you were to tell someone today, you can't do something because of some, you can't do something because of something that's going to happen in 2,100, they'd be pretty upset. They'd be really upset if you were off by 100 years and it was actually going to be 2,200 and you told them they couldn't do it today. So this is the kind of thinking that went into the process. We dug into a lot of detail with the Ocean Protection Council's projections that they put out for the state around the probabilities. It's really important to understand probability when you're thinking about sea level rise. It's not just a static elevation and it's not just 100% certainty that it's going to So looking at the North Spit, and again, these are the projections that are included in the OPC's 2018 guidance, looking at higher emissions, RCP 8.5, so the high emissions projection. This table tells you the probability that sea level rise will meet or exceed these elevations. Now, again, side note here, this doesn't include the, you know, the H++ scenario, the Antarctic melt melts and, and we suddenly are subject to 20 feet of sea level rise. This is just looking at the probability, probabilistic models. Well, to get to six feet of elevation, so that one meter by 2,100, here's that 2%. This is straight out of OPC guidance. So, you know, if I were to say to you, hey, you have a 2% chance of winning my roulette table, how much do you want to bet on it? Probably going to say, not a lot. If I said you had a 90% chance of winning my roulette table, you might throw down a lot of chips. So there's a 90% chance we're going to meet or exceed two feet of sea level rise. There's a 2% chance that we're going to meet or exceed six feet by 2,100. And going out this table even farther, you can see it's infinitesimally small that we would get to two meters or, or even 10 feet. 0.1% chance at that probability, 0.1% chance that that eventuality would happen. So it's important to look at these tables and we've structured our recommendations based on both the probabilistic models, how likely is this for different asset types, as well as the, the inundation risk. Once it does reach that, how often, how frequently are we going to experience those conditions? And can we, you know, protect those assets by enhancing the existing levees? Okay, so the next question is, what are we going to do? This is where this elevation analysis of existing levees came in. This information was used to make the estimates on how much the levees would cost to protect that protection area. Let's skip a little bit of that. And ultimately, the direction was given to, yes, let's pursue this quote unquote protection zone. Now, we're referring to it as the adaptation zone where basically we would fall back last. So the, you know, just super big picture, the idea is that these low-lying areas around this, that are, you know, in lower value uses and have already some adaptive capacity would, would be less protected. It's not to say we would stop protecting them today, but you know, if, you know, sea level rise is rising quickly enough to overtop the levees that protect these bottom lands, we would let those go first and start thinking of those in terms of habitat qualities as opposed to, you know, maybe agricultural qualities. We'd be looking to restore these lands and, and maybe use those as wetland banks to, to offset the impacts, the minor impacts that will have to wetlands as we're, you know, protecting the rest of the city. And so this was overall the, the strategy that was kind of directed in 2018. The goal was to create desirable and feasible adaptation. The objective is to develop criteria for suitable investment of public and private resources. And we would have a strategy that implemented a measured retreat. So we would accommodate the tidal where planned and infeasible to defend. We would adapt uses and assets that are infeasible to defend, that are in those zones. We would defend where it's feasible. We would protect the areas like South G and H Streets and ultimately retreat where and when no longer feasible to defend or adapt. So that's the overall strategy that we've been given. So right now, in your packet, you'll have, you know, this, this image, I believe it's eight dash two, figure eight dash two, two dash eight dash two. And this demonstrates this Zone One where we would fall, fall back last. Ultimately, you know, the sea level rise, I'm sorry, it was in the, the packet from last time. We didn't replicate the LCP this time. In the, we would fall back last to, you know, Samoa would be sort of the last line of defense if this area was no longer feasible to defend, Zone One. Zone Two would be the, the first to go. And then we have some interim strategies. For example, the oxidation ponds for the wastewater treatment plant ultimately could be a first step in retreating from Zone One that would offer an opportunity for establishing new wetlands, new habitat that would, you know, provide some storm surge protections, some, you know, some, some settling pond protection potentially. And then, you know, ultimately, this would be planned for and phased with, you know, a retreat strategy for the wastewater treatment plant that we'll be looking to do over the course of the next, you know, 40, 50, 60 years, depending on how quickly sea level rise occurs. And then by that time, you know, the, you know, the plan will be in full force and effect to, to have the rest of this, this land retreat as necessary. Again, I want to point out, we talked about this at our last meeting, that the Gateway Area Plan, which is just north of Samoa, is heavily involved in our sea level rise strategy, our retreat strategy. We have hundreds of homes in this area that we can relocate into that area. Okay, so just shifting, and I believe this is the last slide, to the proposed zoning in the local coastal program. This was received, this was based on the direction the Planning Commission gave in December when we looked at these, to make these modifications. I don't have listed here all of the changes, and so there might be a few minor changes elsewhere that I won't point out. But I will point to a couple of the major changes that we had talked about. The first is that, you know, some of these properties here, like we discussed last time, will become mixed use in this local coastal program update. Some of these are industrial, some of these are commercial right now, but we are just labeling them all mixed use. And that will sort of set the stage for whatever becomes adopted into the Gateway Plan ultimately, being able to easily be transitioned into a local coastal program update that mirrors, because that is really a mixed use plan. The other major change that we have here is this CCV, Coastal Commercial Visitor zoning designation that covers a large part of the protection zone that's privately held. And again, the point of this zone is to try and encourage conversion of land use, you know, away from, in, in particular, the, the industrial uses that are happening in these pink zones. There were some changes that the Planning Commission also recommended in land use types in the northern side. I didn't show that on this map, but this land use map is in your local coastal element. And those changes, I think we went over last time, the, the Spear and Alliance changes from residential low and very low to residential medium density. So those are, those are the slides that I had prepared. That's kind of what I wanted to go over tonight in terms of the presentation. And really now, it's just an opportunity to kind of open it up. We could take a deeper dive on the local coastal element, if you wish, to look at some of that policy language. And I can connect the dots between the discussions that we've had that I've just conveyed tonight about the overall strategy and how we've translated that into policy language, if you wish. You know, or if you have specific comments or recommendations, we can, we can take a look at those too.
Thank you very much. So staff is looking for questions and to provide guidance to staff. So does anyone have any questions or comments? Commissioner Mayor?
I have a couple of questions first. And can you hear me with the mask on?
Barely, yeah.
Maybe, maybe I'll take it off just to speak into the mic. Is this better? Okay. The first one is, in all of these assessments, have, is there a mechanism built in to incorporate more recent scientific analyses of the rate of change of sea levels as we learn about them? You know, we're, we're all very aware that the, the most recent FUCCC report indicates an accelerating rate of sea level rise. And it, it seems as though your charts can deal with that, but the sort of benchmarking system in the action parts of the plan might need to be adjusted in terms of our risk assessments. Is that, is that something that's built into this planning process? And maybe you could explain how?
Yeah, I think part of the concern over continuously increasing rates or, you know, changes in the science and how that would impact our plan if we were to establish timeframes associated with these sea level rise projections was part of the motivation for shifting away from including that in the document. And so I would say that our, our document is completely insensitive to changes in rates as they're projected and completely addresses the, the impacts. Because instead of focusing on the timelines at which the elevations will be achieved, which would be, you know, superseded by subsequent projections, we just focus on the elevations and what those trigger points are for the elevations. In fact, in, in some of the policy language, we explicitly state that we know that sea level will ultimately rise to a certain, you know, will certainly rise and that the projects will likely be subject to inundation. And we specifically say that there's, we're not telling you when that's going to happen. We're not going to guarantee that you have a 30-year term or a 50-year term. Each investor has to make that decision for themselves. I do want to ensure that before we adopt this plan, that those probabilities are as updated as possible. Even those will, will likely be, you know, outmoded, outdated, you know, as these projections change because they're, they're, you know, relational to one another. But, you know, ultimately, I think that that, you know, we can address, you know, through either periodic updates if necessary or just recognizing that, you know, the, the best available science is what we'd be using. Obviously, you know, if the rate of sea level rise change, you know, outpaces the city's ability to manage retreat, then, you know, we're, we're basically, we're not in a planning scenario anymore. I mean, many people have looked at the projections that I showed on the last set of slides and said, well, yeah, why don't you plan for that H++ scenario? You need to plan for that, you know, that biggest case scenario. And the reality is, is that's just really not a planning scenario. If we're going to have 20 feet of sea level rise between now and 2,100, then we're not really going to be worried about, you know, low-lying areas. I mean, 20 feet of sea level rise is going to, you know, come up to the North Town, foothills of North Town. It's going to be completely inundating, you know, you know, all of our bottom, low-lying bottom land subdivisions. And, and that rate of change will be much, much faster than our capacity to, to manage retreat. So that's more like a disaster planning scenario as opposed to a, you know, a planning scenario, a development planning scenario.
Okay, so that's a good segue to my next question, which is, the, the draft plan deals with the sea level rise issues and the hazard mitigation issues for things like seismic hazards, tsunami, et cetera, in, in separate sections. But in reality, the, those areas in, I think you've called them Zone One, of unconsolidated soils that would also be inundated with sea level rise are, are the same ones where the soil would turn to mush in a, in a big quake or the large tsunami that we're probably a little overdue for. So I'm wondering if that combined set of risks fed into some of the land use designations and retreat strategies that you've been trying to put together?
Yeah, that's a really good point. And I think that if you look at our hazard map of the city of Arcata in the general plan, you'll see that the majority of the city has multiple overlapping hazards, which is that it's got, you know, you know, hazard, hazard map.
Thank you, Colin. I'm sorry, I'll start over for the public's benefit because they couldn't hear what I was saying. If you look at the city of Arcata's hazard maps in the general plan, you'll find that the majority of the city is, has overlapping hazards. And so there's, there's really nowhere in the city that doesn't have a situation that has multiple hazards. And each of the different hazard situations has different timelines, trigger points and, you know, scenarios for responding to them. And so, you know, I think it's appropriate to segregate those different hazards into the sections to really identify what policies specifically address them. If you think about it, you know, it would be similar to our safety element where we address different subject matter under separate subheadings. But I, it, it does not play into the decision-making process that because a particular site has both a tsunami hazard, a liquefaction hazard and a potential sea level rise vulnerability, that that site should not be developed in a way that another site that doesn't share those characteristics should be for two primary reasons. Number one, we would basically conclude that the entire city of Arcata is not developable using that methodology. And then number two, because the, you know, because of what I described earlier, that the, the hazards are typically independent of one another and on, on completely separate timelines. So I hope that answers the question.
It does. And I guess the third question is going back to those protective structures around...
around... To what extent would providing those protective structures around the sewage treatment plant and South GNH Street, and we've heard a lot about the living coastline and all of those gradual inclines up to what are now the wastewater treatment ponds, to what extent would building and maintaining those require changing state or federal law?
That's a great question, too. This goes back to sort of the elevator pitch that we had related to this topic in 2017, 18, that, you know, the Coastal Act was, you know, basically invented when the world was flat. We now know it's round. And so, in my humble opinion, we need some updates to the Coastal Act itself. We need some legislative fixes to identify and understand, you know, how to, you know, to implement these adaptation strategies. I fully respect folks who don't believe that's the case and think that, you know, we should, you know, just be retreating and not doing any kind of protection. And I think that's the conversation that, you know, we need to have as a, you know, as a community, both locally and statewide. Some of the... Some of these projects, I mean, I guess there's not a real direct answer to that. Some of these projects could potentially be incorporated into, you know, restoration projects, for example. The McDaniel-Sloo project is a perfect example of a restoration project that had a fallback levy. We removed a levy and we built a levy, and the Coastal Commission approved it. And so it is possible to create new levies in the coastal zone. I believe that those levies, some portions of those levies even may have impacted coastal wetlands. And so there are also, you know, elements within the existing Coastal Act that would allow for not only levy creation, but, you know, potentially wetland impacts with mitigation. But I do think it's a, you know, an untested element to, you know, our local coastal program. It's a, an area where, you know, we are certainly at greatest risk of the Coastal Commission having, you know, major concerns with our local coastal program. And it's also an area where, in fact, there's very little impact of us making the statement that we believe levies should be created to protect these assets, because the majority of the lands that are subject to this type of infrastructure is in the Coastal Commission's retained jurisdiction. So we wouldn't have any say, our local coastal program wouldn't have any influence over the decision to add a levy or not. All of those decisions will be made at the Coastal Commission level. And so in a lot of regards, this is our statement of purpose, our statement of, you know, of policy that really has no practical application beyond just informing the community and the commission that we believe that these areas should be protected into the future. And would be happy to work with the Coastal Commission on a legislative fix to the Coastal Act.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? From the commission? Nope. I have just a couple of questions. So who maintains the levies, the dikes?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's really up to the individual landowners at this point. There's no, you know, reclamation district or, you know, you know, county-wide or region-wide entity that does that. It would be great if we could create one. The way that the policy language leads, leans into this issue is to, in areas where we don't currently have easements, then we would be requesting those as people came in in the future for projects. Let me share an image so we can just talk about this for a sec. Okay, I know how to do this, I swear. There it is. So in this area, for example, on the backside, this is G Street, and here's all the industrial lands. There's a nice little business park down here. We would need to acquire an easement to this backside here to maintain and build a levy. So property owner X comes in and says, "Hey, I want to do a project." We say, "Great." Two things. You got to give us an easement. You got to build out the core for this levy. And you got to let us have a trail on it. So we got to have public egress as well as the easement to maintain a levy. And we work with all of the property owners on this side to obtain similar easements. And one by one, as the projects come in, they would contribute to construction of the levy. Or maybe we'd be, you know, saving money through some sort of special tax for the levy district. And then ultimately, we would build this out. And this would both be sea level rise protection from the backside as waters start to encroach from here, as well as, in addition to our trail system, so that people could walk on the levies.
I was just wondering if the public is seeing this?
It doesn't look like the view is on that right now.
So how many privately-owned levies or dikes, are they the same thing, levies and dikes, same thing, just different terminology, are there? And are we, can, what happens if the property owner doesn't maintain that? Is there, what's the fallback?
I don't know the answer to the question of how many levies and dikes, or how many miles of levies and dikes. It's extensive. Aldrin Laird did do a vulnerability assessment on levies, and I think that information's out there. I don't have it at the top of my hands, top of my head, but I can bring that information back. The concept here would be that, at least in this small scale, we'd be looking to, you know, establish, you know, this could be done through maybe an assessment district or, you know, I don't necessarily think it's fair to levy all of the costs, no pun intended, on those landowners to create and maintain the sea level rise protection, because that zone really does facilitate uses throughout the city with the wastewater treatment plant being where it's at. So, you know, we, to implement this, we'd have to get into a much broader public discussion about, you know, how to fund these. But I think the concept here is that, at least within this new, you know, what's labeled on this map as protection zone or Zone 1 in our new maps, we would have easements and the city would maintain these ultimately. And they would be funded through, you know, local and hopefully state and federal funds as well.
So there's the private property, I mean, is it expensive? I mean, that's just really scary to me that, you know, what if the owner can't afford it and they let the levies go or something happens? That seems kind of serious to me.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why, in this plan, the City of Arcata would take that easement and maintain, would carry on that long-term maintenance of those facilities. And, you know, the reality is, is that, again, the funding sources at this point are speculative. I know the state's working on a funding source right now that's going to help jurisdictions, you know, plan a shovel-ready pipeline of projects to work on adaptation projects. And so we're looking forward to seeing more information on that through 2022, and I'll share that with the Planning Commission when that comes out. But essentially, that could be, you know, those kinds of funding streams are being developed, and they could be leveraged to help, you know, initiate and/or maintain, you know, projects like this in the future. And so some of this is basically, you know, at this, at this point, we're trying to identify the policy and the zoning that would allow these programs to be implemented, and trying to establish a framework that will ensure that they are maintained, you know, for as long as we can, you know, with the resources that we have available to us. Now, the policy doesn't commit to any specific elevation. Right now, we think we can probably do 15 to 17 feet, at least with the wastewater treatment plant. And we think that that's reasonable. But it could be that, you know, even after enacting this policy, if we can't generate the funds to, you know, to build it out, or if we can't generate the funds to maintain it long-term, you know, and these, the levies are relatively stable. I mean, you look at it, we have earth and dike levies protecting the most of Humboldt Bay. They were not engineered. That literally just piled up mud. And those have been standing for 100 years. Now, some of those are also starting to fail, you know, as winter storms are causing erosion and sea level rise will start to overtop. So I think that, you know, the two take-home messages here are that, you know, one, we do need to see, you know, a, an entity, we can't leave this up to the verities of, you know, individual property owners to maintain. So we do need to see an entity maintaining this. And it would be great if we could develop an entity region-wide, you know, JPA or, you know, dike reclamation district or something like that that could maintain the dikes region-wide. But that just hasn't happened yet. And then number two, that once these things are built, I mean, I think that they, you know, they're expensive to build, but once they're built, they're relatively stable.
Okay. And then regarding our wastewater treatment plant, what's the Coastal Commission's opinion on having, where it's located?
We are going through the coastal development permit process right now for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. It's been broken into two phases. And I am, you know, I would need to lean on Natricotry, our city engineer, and Emily Sinkhorn, our environmental services director, and their teams to get into any detail at all with you about what those, you know, projects entail and the timelines on them. But the Coastal Commission is currently reviewing our application. We received a request for more information on the sea level rise sections. And so I can't tell you specifically what they think, but I can tell you that we're kind of going through that process right now, and we'll know more in the near future.
Okay, and I have one final question. Sorry. You have used the term several times, releasing assets. Exactly what do you mean by that?
I'm sorry, what type of asset?
Releasing assets. You would mention several times during several meetings about releasing assets. Hopefully, we won't have to release assets. What exactly does that mean?
Oh, right, yeah. So, so an alternative view and, you know, perhaps, I mean, I don't want to try and represent the Coastal Commission, but my understanding of the residential guidance for sea level rise adaptation, for example, that they've provided, is that instead of doing something to protect this zone, what you should do instead is to, you know, set policies that essentially remove development rights within this zone. And so if a property comes in and it was burned down, you tell them, "I'm sorry, you can't rebuild." Or if a property comes in and they want to, you know, do an addition, you tell them, "I'm sorry, you can't do an addition." And then over time, through attrition, as these properties, you know, become damaged or burned down, or, you know, as properties become, you know, unused for whatever other reason, that you just essentially don't allow new uses into them. And in that way, you will have, over time, just naturally through attrition, have removed all of the uses in this zone. And so that's one way of going about that. And when I look at that plan, when I look at the images that they show for how this would work, you know, as an economic development thinker, as a, you know, former redevelopment agency employee, what I see is blight. What I see is planned blight, that we intentionally are devaluing properties today. If I tell you that your neighborhood that you live in, you can no longer develop or build or maintain or rebuild, your property value's gone down today, you know, immediately. As soon as I say that that's our new policy, you no longer can sell your property. So you have $0 in your value. And so instead, we're taking the approach, and that will have ramifications for not only the property owners in that area, but for the people who are living in those areas. This is, this area also happens to house one of our lowest-income census tracts, has one of our highest populations of Hispanic folks, probably rivals areas within the Valley West. And so we have, you know, lower-income people of color, and you're going to tell them that their property is now valueless if they own it, or you're going to tell them that, you know, the owner of this property is no longer likely to maintain and manage it and improve it because their property is valueless now. So that's, that to me is, you know, both from the direct, you know, implications of having buildings go, you know, basically broken windows vacant, to the implications on the impact to the individuals that live and own property in that area as a recipe for blight. And instead, what we're proposing is an alternative that allows for a slow transition through economically improving the area towards new land uses that, you know, support a lower intensity on that land base and are more readily, you know, released, that you can, you know, move, you know, fall back and retreat from that asset in the future more easily. At the same time, we need to plan for, you know, where all those uses are going to occur elsewhere in the city. We have the same issue that folks have been concerned with. Well, if you change the zoning in the gateway, you know, where do, you know, where all these uses move to that are considered non-conforming? And again, for these properties, you know, they would be, with this new land use, they'd be considered non-conforming potentially if we, you know, if we made it so that you couldn't redevelop them. But they'd be able to continue to exist in their current status. So we need to do an overall planning that takes into consideration not just what's going to happen in that zone, not just how those uses are going to defees over time, but also how we plan for where those uses migrate to within the City of Arcata.
All right, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Figueroa?
You want to go first?
Oh.
All right. So David, just a quick question regarding, I like the alternative transition. That sounds like the way to go in regards to creating blight and, you know, for individuals' properties and so forth. Doesn't seem like that'd be the appropriate measure in regards of how it would be dealing with, you know, this community, this part of our community. The question I have is, you know, we're generating, we're creating language in our local coastal program that, you know, that says protection zone, right? And we have protection zone specifically related to our own infrastructure and communities within this area. Where does it come, where does it get to the point where we're forced, you know, to use eminent domain and combination in respects to specifically, not necessarily the properties, but the levies to protect the protection zone? And, you know, where is it, you know, where does it fall in line where it becomes a public safety issue?
Yeah, those are really great questions that I'm probably not fully ready to address. I think that's definitely a big policy question. The couple of things that I will say is that, you know, we are, we own a lot of the land that surrounds this area. And really, it's just this back edge here that we don't own. And so, you know, we continually seek to acquire new properties that we can use for, you know, near-term, you know, the restoration agricultural purposes, like you see on the baylands, as well as, you know, for future adaptation purposes. And so I would say, you know, I don't foresee the city needing to go that route. Certainly, the city has those police powers, but I really don't think it would be applicable here. I also think that the majority of these landowners that, you know, you know, are budding up against this low-lying area here, even if they're reluctant now to give the city an easement, when they start to see, you know, tides, you know, six times a year, you know, lapping at the back door, they're probably going to be real quick to, you know, offer up an easement.
Yeah, that sounds like probably going to be the situation. So is that a fall in line with, you know, I've just seen in regards of the purchasing of the Christie property by Environmental Services, is this kind of the approach that we're going for? I know we've got mitigation needs, obviously, for what we're doing, for the improvements for the wastewater treatment facilities, but, and also other needs on our other projects that we have in the city. But is this one of the big pushes in acquiring that property?
Yeah, that is definitely a consideration. And when Christie's agent reached out to us and let us know that it was on the market, you know, that was certainly the first thing that I thought of. you know, that was certainly the first thing that I thought of.
Commissioner White, did you have some questions?
I think that Christian kind of covered. I was just also weighing in or agreeing with it. I think it's better to utilize those properties as much as, and as long as we can, so that we're not displacing the poorest of the poor. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the coastal commercial visiting, visitor serving, and how that might affect those people if there is some transition? And is there any funding opportunities in place or in plans to help those folks if they are displaced for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, we have, you know, on multiple, on multiple fronts. I mean, there's, there's a lot of change going on in our communities, and it's going to, you know, change has a tendency to affect different people differently. And I think that, you know, what I, what I'd like to be able to say is that we will, you know, have programs, oops, that's not what I meant to do, have programs in place so that, you know, we can, darn it, sorry, trying to zoom in on this map here. Programs in place that would allow us to, you know, assist everyone that needs it in And so kind of just zooming in here, what you can see is this entire area right here is zoned residential. And it's also has this CCV overlay zone. And so these, these people would be, you know, vulnerable to this transition. And, you know, I think that's a, you know, there's kind of a double-edged sword here. I mean, in one, you know, on the one side, we can say, well, you know, we want to make sure that these people aren't forced out, so let's not have the CCV, the commercial visitor serving overlay on these properties, so these uses don't transition, you know, before, you know, before their time, so to speak, you know, before it's, before sea level rise impacts are imminent. And then, you know, and then removing that to protect those current uses also has the, you know, the negative impact of not preparing the site for, for future sea level rise. And so that really is, you know, I think that that would be an important recommendation for the, the Planning Commission to consider, to deliberate and make a recommendation of the council ultimately. We have, you know, any project, any program that we're involved in, we, you know, with, financially with our, our grant programs, for example, we have relocation assistance for those. But right now, we're just in this county and in this city woefully behind on housing production. And so for, you know, if someone were to come in and say, you know, I'm going to invest in this entire block, and I'm going to displace everybody in this entire block, or, you know, buy two of the, you know, multifamily projects, and I'm going to displace 20 families, there's nowhere in Arcata for 20 families to move right now. You know, you'd be hard-pressed to find, you know, 20 households tomorrow for, you know, in, in the county. So I do think that those are important implications to consider. You know, one thing we could do is not add the CCV overlay now, and then once we've completed our infill planning elsewhere in the city, and we're actually starting to see, you know, investment in those infill areas throughout the city that, you know, that we then come back and add this layer to that area and, you know, so that we're sure that there's going to be some place for those people to land. We could also, you know, get creative about programs for, you know, for development. One of the, one of the, you know, concepts behind the gateway area is that in addition to the form-based code that gives, you know, the community and the developers certainty around what the city of Arcata is willing to accept in terms of the building type and the way that it looks, the massing and scaling and so on and so forth, there's also this amenities program. And if through that amenities program, you know, we could connect willing property owners in this area that wish to transition their uses, maybe I own, own a house in an ADU, you know, in this area, and I want to, you know, take advantage of the CCV and transition to, say, a short-term rental. And that would mean, you know, evicting my, my long-term tenants who have worked, who've lived there. And then I can connect those people with someone who's just built property in the gateway zone and make sure that they have, you know, somewhere to land in Arcata. You know, that could be an amenity that's built into the, to the gateway plan, an amenity that ties to, you know, relocation. So we could get creative with, with programs like that. And I want to be clear, I'm just kind of like shooting from the cuff here, trying to be creative around, you know, how we could manage these, these types of transitions. But I do think that's an important policy consideration. There's, you know, almost a truism in climate change and adaptation planning that the people who are most vulnerable have the highest impacts from climate adaptation policy, and this is a high-risk area. So thank you for identifying that.
Could you tell me at what point would you be anticipating the Planning Commission to make those kinds of recommendations? Is that forthcoming, like, soon, now?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, you just daylighted the issue. I think it's, you wanted to have, you know, the conversation, or if you want to, you know, think on it, and, you know, we could pick it up at a study session, or, I mean, it's really, it's up to the, to the commission to really guide that, that discussion.
I, yeah, I was just, you know, and it talks about the city's continuing to protect and defend significant investments where feasible, and I guess I'm just trying to clarify, like, what does a significant investment mean, like?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's probably not terribly clear to a lot of people. So specifically, what that policy ties to is the conclusion that this area that's identified here in CCV primarily, with a couple of other ancillary properties over here, that those should be protected, that we should defend those areas, you know, with both hard and soft armoring. Areas like the baylands, you know, we have a, you know, a couple cattle that live on them, you know, sure, the rancher is going to be upset, the cattle maybe, you know, love this space, but, you know, they'll find greener pastures. And, and so this area may be less feasible to throw a whole lot of money at defending. It might be more, you know, more effective to use those lands as the first, you know, accommodation zone. So we would look to, you know, try and create habitats that try and maintain the salt marsh habitat, for example, as seawater rises, you know, and so that would require modification in the landscape. And that's where we put the dollars onto this property as opposed to in a, you know, levy to try and protect it long-term. This area over here, again, back in $2017, I think it was, has $141 million worth of, you know, assets, public and private. It also generates significant revenue, tax, sales tax revenue in the course of the year. And so this area has, you know, a lot of dollars that are either already invested or are continuously generated from it, and so it makes sense to put a levy around this. That's where those significant assets are, or significant investment is, in the, the built environment, South G and H Street, and then some of these properties off Samoa.
So when you say as long as the benefits of protection outweigh the costs, I guess, who determines that? I mean, obviously, the people that live there feel like that's pretty important.
Yeah. It, it really is a, you know, simple feasibility analysis. If we have the funds to do it, if we have the approvals to do it, if we have the ability to do it, and we do it, then, then we'll defend. If any of those elements are missing, if we can't get the permits because the Coastal Commission doesn't agree, if we can't generate the revenue to actually build the levies, then we won't be able to. And it could be that, you know, right now, we're projecting that we could, that it's financially feasible to do this to 17 feet in elevation. It could be that we start this effort and get to, you know, 14 feet in elevation, which will, again, 14 feet elevation is going to buy a lot of time, as long as, you know, sea level rise doesn't continue to accelerate and outpace us. So we get to 14 feet of elevation, and we realize at that point, you know, hey, look, this, this program was working, but now it's no longer financially feasible. We don't have the revenue sources to maintain it. Everyone is now put on notice that, you know, 14 feet is our trigger elevation. Based on what we see, we'll give people, you know, best guess, estimate as to when those levies would start to be overtopped. And again, we got to remember, this is going to be a slow progression. And so when levies start getting overtopped, or when, you know, groundwater starts inundating from below, you know, those are going to be periodic events initially. Right now in Florida, for example, they have, you know, sunny day flooding when the, you know, the tides come up through the storm drains, they flood the streets, but they don't happen all, every day, all year long. If you were to look at the maximum inundation footprint of those areas, though, you would see that, you know, they go quite a bit inland. So we'll have the same thing happen here, is that at some point, we'll say, look, we can't defend this anymore. And at that point, there will still be a timeframe when those uses will be serviceable. And, and really, depending on the trajectory of, of, you know, climate change and sea level rise for us, you know, those, those uses may be, you know, indefinitely feasible, you know, with that periodic nuisance flooding. Or it could be that sea level rise continues to overtop those and they become permanently inundated. So there's just, there's a lot of unknowns, and I think those unknowns and that, that low probability of, of event is what drove us ultimately towards the recommendation and drove the decision-makers towards the recommendation to, to adopt a strategy that, that tries to take advantage of near-term and medium-term economic output from the area, you know, as, as we have it. And it also forestalls this decision that we have to make about, you know, social justice. It also provides, you know, economic opportunity for, you know, employment opportunity in, in the near term. And it also doesn't throw those neighborhoods into, you know, essentially, you know, precipitous decline in value by coming out and stating that, hey, you know, these, these things are valueless today because you can't build on them. So there's, there's a lot of upsides to the, the strategy that we're doing, I think.
Could I ask one more question? I know that it's not a crystal ball, and we don't know whenever that trigger is going to be. And the unknown question that bothers me the most is what happens to those people? Are they on their own? Or is this the point where we come in and we trigger that we're going to, you know, help these folks who are going to be displaced, whatever that, you know, sea level rise number is?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I really do hesitate to predict. I mean, I think it really depends on, you know, what those impacts are. You know, if we get a, you know, all it takes is one ice sheet, you know, if we get a significant up, you know, increase in sea level rise in the near term, then again, we're in more of a hazard mitigation scenario, we're, we're in more of an emergency response scenario. And I suspect that, you know, yeah, we'd have, you know, Red Cross and, and, you know, hazard, you know, designation at the state and federal levels potentially, and, you know, funds would be probably released and made available to relocate people, but, I mean, that's all just pure speculation.
But then we've moved from planning to disaster.
Yeah.
And that's not a good place to be, obviously. Not for these folks, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. And it, you know, really, the, you know, the intent here is to create policies that do form or cluster around, you know, a planning horizon. It's, it's a little bit of a challenge because our typical planning horizon is like, you know, 20 years, or sometimes we'll make a, you know, 30-year plan, but that's really reaching out there because there are a lot of unknowns at that point. And so, you know, I think we are really challenged with this long-range planning work where we can project out, you know, with a high degree of uncertainty, but we can project out scenarios. And we just, you know, we don't, we don't have sort of the, the certainty of the, the near-term, you know, decision-making process, so.
I promise, this is just my last question. So if, what would it look like if we did delay the coastal commercial visiting, serving overlay zone until we had some kind of agreement or benefits with developers over in the gateway where they might be able to help move these and relocate these people? I mean, what would that do to, I know you want to, like, start thinking about, we're going to be, you know, that's, that's money in the hand, if we can, you know, capitalize on that. But at the same time, once we put that overlay and there's no plan for these people, where do they go? Like, like you said, right now, if that were to happen, we could have all of these families displaced and no plan in, in place for them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it could be done in two steps, and that would ameliorate some of the concern about that. Because I could see, you know, one of two, you know, probable scenarios for that area. I mean, if, you know, the, the dream is that, you know, someone, for instance, you know, buys the scrapyard and turns it into an RV park. RV parks are, you know, have almost a zero-built environment. They're highly resilient to, to flooding, so if it's flooding part of the year, you just don't use the RV park at that time. And then ultimately, if it becomes such that, you know, it's flooded most of the year, that's a very easy asset to remove. And so, you know, but, but clearly, we're not just going to have hundreds of RV parks in this area, you know, so there are other uses, use types. I can see those properties where there's already, you know, housing units, more than likely being converted to some sort of a, you know, tourist accommodations. And so, you know, most likely scenario is that they, that, you know, some investor buys the house, you know, maybe it's a local, you know, family that has some extra income, they buy a house, and then they turn it into a SRVO, a short-stay rental for, for tourists. You know, another idea or scenario is that, you know, they could buy up multiple parcels, combine them, and then maybe build a boutique hotel or something like that. You know, it's a little more infrastructure out there, but it, you know, so you'd have to contend with them moving that at some point. So I don't know, you know, there's just a lot of speculation on how that property could get used. And I think ultimately, breaking it into two steps where you adopt the CCV onto the pink properties first, and then once we've developed a, a better plan for relocation, adopted onto the multifamily properties next, you know, it's a very viable suggestion.
Thank you. Are there any other?
It's looking a lot like this document is nearing completion. And my question is, what is the process from this point going forward, what, before we get to implementation?
The, I mean, this is a draft document. I think I sort of jokingly mentioned last time that I've been working on it my entire career here, and if I, and if it takes the rest of my career, as long as we get it done before I retire, then I'll be happy. But, but I do think that, you know, we've, we've worked with the Coastal Commission staff. I think this document had three iterations of review. And it was reviewed not only by the local staff, but also by the state staff, in particular around the sea level rise policy and the water quality policy. And so we feel like it's a fairly well-vetted document in terms of the, you know, general direction that we've received through that, that engagement leading up to this, the decisions that were made by the Council of Planning Commission leading up to this, and the document that you have before you. But similar to the, you know, concern that we've heard from folks on the gateway plan, you know, hey, this is the first time we've, we've seen it, first time we've been able to flip through the pages and, and make specific comments on what's in there, it really is up to the decision-makers at this point, you know, to what timeline to put this on. If we put it on a, a near-term timeline, I can see it getting, getting to the Coastal Commission sometime early next year. And that would mean spending the next couple of months, you know, gathering public input on the document, and, you know, considering recommendations for revisions and then making those revisions. And if we go on a longer, you know, longer-term approval where, you know, the, the public wants to sit with us and have more time with it, you know, by all means, I mean, there's, there's no specific end date. I think we've got enough of a product right now to, to satisfy the Coastal Commission for the, the grant deliverable. They gave us a 2020, sorry, 2018 grant, I think it was, to produce this work. And the intent was, the original scope was to complete the local process and be ready for submittal. But I, I think they'll be flexible once they see the documents that we have, you know, produced and that we're, you know, basically in the final public process in, in the review of these documents, so.
Do we have any members of the public that have any comments?
Some more comments.
Okay.
Okay. I asked some questions before. I have some comments as well. First, I, I think there's some absolutely brilliant stuff in here, and the way the pieces fit together. And the way the pieces fit together is finally hanging together as a whole that's making a fair amount of sense. I was super skeptical about your blight resistance argument for the pink and yellow area down there and what you were calling the peninsula for a long time. But with the kinds of protections you have to prevent overdevelopment and to make sure that areas that had been damaged by flooding would not be further damaged, it's making a lot more sense. I think that this draft hasn't gone far enough in restricting that type of development, though, and in providing incentives for landowners to make better choices in the future. To that effect, I think your idea of either leaving the CCV out for the time being or have it come in at some incremental point in the future is really wise as far as not displacing low-income residents who might find that they have nowhere else to go in Arcata. But I also think that it doesn't make sense for the city to continue to subsidize reinvestment in areas of high risk without also providing a way for the city to be reasonably protected in the future. So there were provisions in here for people who insist on rebuilding areas on properties that had been damaged, for that rebuilding to count as new construction and be subject to building codes that new construction would be subject to. I think that makes a lot of sense. But I think the city needs to go a step farther, which would be to insist that anyone who insists on reinvesting in that area not only be subject to the kinds of restrictions here in the code, but to affirmatively sign a document that agrees ahead of time that they will vacate and clean up their site at the benchmark when the city says that that's going to happen. That's going to eliminate risks of people screaming unconstitutional taking later on. And I think that at the point when property owners are investing in new development, whether it's on their own property that they've owned for a long time or whether it would change use or intensify use, which I don't think is a great idea, I think that they should be asked to put up some sort of a guarantee, some sort of a bond, that would also contribute to a fund that the city or they themselves could draw on later to cover the costs of helping them vacate the site, clean it up, and possibly relocating, remembering that many of these properties are absentee ownerships with tenants who can't necessarily go anywhere else. And those owners should also understand that one of the costs of having a profitable investment in a risky area, an area where the city is subsidizing their continued decision to take those risks, will be to help provide for the eventual vacation and relocation of their tenants or of themselves. There are a lot of precedents for that kind of fund. It would give the city resources that wouldn't require us to wait for the state or the federal government to come up with some kind of relocation or disaster grants. The city would retain control of it. Private owners, if it went with the land, the next owners of that not blighted property would be able to take advantage of the previous owner's investments. In a sense, it could be kind of like a reverse easement, but it would make it very clear that investments in this area, which in effect the city would be heavily subsidizing through protection, are subject to conditions that investment in other properties in Arcata might not be. And I think this would protect residents, it would protect landowners, it would protect the city. I'm also kind of horrified at the idea of anything in this plan advocating additional housing in that high-risk area, including mobile homes, and frankly, including even accessory dwelling units. So if that constitutes a gradual disinvestment in the area, it might very well. But I think the idea of transitioning to alternative uses is a really, really sound one. I'm -- I like the idea that there will be opportunities for continued use in those areas. I don't like the idea that the city may end up holding the bag in the end for owners who have chosen to take risks when they had other choices. So I want to protect tenants, I want to prevent blight, I want to understand that residential development, people sleeping overnight on unconsolidated soils with rising sea levels, is just not a good thing for the city to subsidize. So I wrote some of this down, and I've given David a set of these comments. It's, I think a bunch of this stuff is stuff people have already said. I don't think the city should put the use of eminent domain off the table. I think it's a super valuable tool, and especially if we already have a source of funds with which to offer compensation, it can actually further these goals in a way that offers the city a lot more flexibility and protects landowners. And finally, the wastewater treatment plant? The city's already committed to, what, $60 million to upgrade the plant? I can't remember the exact figure. And that was assuming a slightly lower rate of population growth than I think we're currently looking at with the Cal Poly projections. And it seems to me that one of the amenities that really needs to be offered as part of the Gateway Plan or any other plan to provide additional density and subsidies and land use controls elsewhere in town would be to give a big, big bonus to any kind of innovation that will keep sewage out of the plant. That may mean lowering some densities and some housing developments to allow for some of those innovative systems to be decentralized. There are all kinds of things that can happen. And I would just throw out a challenge to developers and to Cal Poly to start thinking through some of those innovative technologies so that Arcata can stay on the forefront of what we do with our wastewater in the way that we have been for the last generation. So.
Who else had questions? Somebody else was raising their hands. Was it Commissioner White?
Am I allowed to say bravo? That's brilliant. I really appreciated what you put forth there, Judith. I think that's an excellent solution of putting together a reserve for developers in that particular area so that the city's not left holding the bag and those folks that are underserved or in socioeconomic status that if they do get displaced, there is a way for them to -- there's a saving grace. There's something that's going to be there waiting for them and cleanup so that the city's not also. So if they do choose to stay, there's a way to deal with that. I was just wanting to know, is there a map? Or can you show us a map of the local coastal with the Gateway and what that might look like as far as if there's any conflicting?
I'm sorry, was the question, can I show a map of the?
The local coastal plan and the Gateway and how they might fit together and where there might be some overlap?
Yep. So this was from the March 2 meeting with the City Council. And so, again, it'd be a great meeting to go back and watch again. And you'll get a more detailed discussion around how the different areas within the coastal zone, how they interact with our local coastal program. But right here, this is, this map is just sort of floating on top of the aerial image. It is our currently adopted local coastal program map. And it shows the boundary in a thick black line with, here's the plaza and areas north that are outside the coastal zone, and then the areas that are inside the coastal zone to the south. This little heartbeat right here, EKG, is this zag right here. So there's, that's how it maps over. And this blue line continues and drops down right there. So that's the coastal zone. And this is in the Gateway Area Plan as well. If you look in your Gateway Area Plan, this figure, this underlying figure, which -- okay. Is not exactly like this. I've identified the areas that are in the CADDX zone here. But this underlying figure is in your Gateway Area Plan, and it shows the coastal zone boundary. These areas that are hashed out, so here's, just to orient you real quick, here's the Wing Inflatables or the Slack -- I'm sorry. It's been a long day, apparently. The Winkle Floyd property or the old part of the Beryl District here. Here's K Street right here. There are the two metal buildings on the corner of K, the gas station. So that'll orient you real quick. The added information that's on this map that's not in the Gateway Area Plan is that this entire zone right here, and then this entire zone right here inside the Gateway Area, is also in the categorical exclusion zone. And so, that's an area where coastal development permit is not required if the use is principally permitted. And so, it's just important to note, a lot of folks are concerned over the city allowing principally permitted uses. There are already tons of principally permitted uses. And in fact, in this area right here, part of the Gateway Area, there's already a precedent and a process in place that allows for no public review of principally permitted uses. So that's how those two overlap. This is the northern boundary of the coastal zone, and this yellow line is the Gateway Area.
David, what's the little, what's the block that's between those two shaded areas?
This here?
Yeah.
There's actually remnants of a creek that meander through here. And so, the Coastal Commission retains jurisdiction here, actually. We don't issue coastal development permits on this little sliver. And they only put this CADDX area on properties that don't have coastal resources. And so, because there was a creek here, tidally influenced creek, this area did not get the CADDX area.
Are we ready to move on to our next item?
Did you want to take public comment?
Oh, is there public comment?
If you have a comment you'd like to make, please raise your hand. I'm not, okay, we do have one. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi. Hello, Planning Commission this evening and to the staff. Just one quick question. It sounds like some pretty serious discussion happening with South Beach and wondering at what point you might make that more apparent to the property owners down in that area. I realize it's very early in the process and it's very real, and it's something that it would be good for them to understand and realize that it could happen at different rates, but just the same, just table it to them so everybody's on the same page with it. And that's really about it. I mean, it's good that you're bringing it up because it's really important and it sounds like everybody should be aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public? Okay. So just one final question. What concerned me is when Commissioner Mayor and you were talking about possibly not allowing property owners to rebuild if their house is destroyed or burns down or whatever, that sort of thing. So that could really hurt the property owner if their insurance would cancel them if they weren't able to rebuild it. So just remember, if that happens, they're going to be losing their total investment. And not only that, but their renters, it would cause blight, obviously. Why would they keep up a property if they're never going to get their money back out of it? But their renters wouldn't be able to get renters' insurance, and there would be all kinds of problems. So we need to keep in mind all of it, the whole circle of it. That was the only comment that I had that was alarming to me. In fact, I could just see insurance companies, I mean, insurance rates in California have gotten up so high because of fires and whatnot. But even if the insurance companies possibly got wind that this could happen, they could possibly cancel or really jack up those owners' insurance, which they're just going to pass that on to the tenants and possibly raise their rent. So we need to really walk carefully there so we don't hurt anyone, tenants or the owners. That was the only comment I had. So if we're ready to move on, we have another item, which is an update on the current development projects. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yeah. So I was asked by the chair a couple of weeks ago to bring forward a presentation on current development projects in process. And I am hoping that I will have access to the list that I have for you for that. I haven't ground-tested this, and when I put that on the agenda, I was thinking I would be at my desk. So let me see if I can navigate to this. But basically, what we've done is we've gone through and we've looked at building permits that are in process that haven't been approved, building permits that have been approved over the last year, and then I believe we have a short list of projects that we know are coming forward to the Planning Commission. So give me just one moment while I try and pull that up. We're using all of the various resources we have at our disposal. Okay. Okay. So what I have before you here is the list of, let me move this out of the way. This is the list of projects that are currently in building permit review, and they are pending approval. And so I haven't included every single building permit that we have, excuse me, because the, you know, there are literally hundreds. What I've done, because I think the request was mostly around like new, you know, residential development, is I limited the search function to just new residential projects. And so what you have here is the date they applied, the permit number, where the project is located, and what kind of project it is. And so, you know, you'll see we've got, you know, several second units going in, new ADU, different people type these in with different, you know, descriptions, but basically permit existing second unit is the same as ADU. New single-family residence is new SFR. We have some duplexes coming in, new second unit, new second unit ADU, new single-family residence with attached garage. So you can see the vast majority of these are accessory dwelling units. We have, one of the things that I noticed when I look back on this and also on the projects that were permitted in the recent past is that we have literally an explosion of accessory dwelling units going on right now. We're, once we've compiled data from this year and probably maybe next year, we'll see if the trend continues, we may need to reset our estimates on, you know, our housing element based on how much housing we're going to get out of accessory dwelling units. Because we're already, I mean, just with this list that's currently in application, this is like a whole year's worth of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and these have all come in, well, some of these have been on the books for quite some time, you know, the ones that are, you know, back to, wow.
Is there another page? Is this it?
This is it.
That's it?
Yeah, this is it. And now that I'm looking at this closer, many of these date back to 2021, so these may have stalled. These permits may not be going forward. Generally, we clear the books after six months, and some of these are much, much older than six months.
So there's only one apartment project in the whole list?
Yeah. And again, I mean, I would just point to the fact that the available land base for higher-density projects has been gobbled up. We've used it. Part of the reason why we're doing this big planning work right now is because we've literally gone through all of our residential housing stock. We've done all of the easy stuff. There are a couple of subdivisions that have been approved that couldn't get financed because the, you know, the cost of building was too high. And so even though we had approvals on the books, the O Street, I'm sorry, the 30th Street is a good example, the UROC Housing Project that was approved. It only got built because they got, you know, millions of dollars in subsidy from the state to support that affordable housing project. Otherwise, it would have just sat out there vacant for, you know, like it was for years. We have the Q Street subdivision. There are a couple of houses that have been built on that in the last year or so since it was approved, but there's just not a lot of development going on right now because it's really expensive to build. There are quite a number of ADUs being built in the community right now. They're going up. If you don't have one in your neighborhood, I'm shocked. And it's interesting, too, because I've gotten recent cost estimates from builders, and the cost to develop right now is, you know, like above 200 a square foot. We're used to, you know, 125 to 150 is sort of like, you know, entry level, 150 to 175 is, you know, pretty nice, you know, maybe single-family residence, and then custom homes start getting up into the 200s. Now you can't build for under 200. So I'm not exactly sure how folks are doing it, but they are. We have a number of permits that were just approved. So these are permits, basically approved this year. And again, you can see on this list, let's see, the five, the top ones, five new dwelling units, these are all the UROC project on 30th Street. So that looks like a big, you know, big project right there. It is a big project. It's, you know, the 30th Street. Then we've got, you know, a couple here and there, construct new duplex, bunch of ADUs. So these were approved recently. New single-family second unit, you see down on the bottom here, and new triplex. So yeah, if you're interested, I mean, I can also dig into, you know, our housing element list, and we can start looking back at that again and looking at specific properties. I mean, I'll just give you a real quick example here, just to give you a sense for, you know, what we're talking about. Please. Yeah, fire away.
So are there any updates on the loan process that may be forthcoming for ADUs?
I am still working. I'm trying to get a meeting with Eureka staff to talk about maybe combining efforts and developing a program that could be used in both Eureka and Arcata or a similar program in both Eureka and Arcata, but we haven't connected on that yet. But I'm excited about the possibility for it. Let's see. Here is. Okay.
What are you showing us?
Share my screen again here.
What are you showing us, David?
Let's see. So what I'm showing you here is, this is, you know, City of Arcata, this is Curse Heights. And you can see these properties right here, you know, that are trees, you know, forested properties, just at the end of the road here, kind of on the northern boundary there. Those are included, so all these properties right here, those are part of the original Woodland Heights, Curtis Heights subdivision. There are remainder parcels. Those are included in our housing element as properties that could potentially be developed. You know, if we were to subdivide those into appropriately sized parcels for the area, we'd probably get 10 houses. But the reality is that it would be almost impossible because of the slopes and the terrain out here to subdivide them. There are existing legal parcels, so theoretically, you could have one house here and one house here on that property. And so, single-family second unit, those two properties are counted in our existing housing element list as supporting four potential units, single-family and an ADU on each one. The likelihood that these two parcels get developed anytime soon or potentially ever is really, really low. So we've got a lot of housing stock, a lot of, I'm sorry, a lot of properties in our housing stock that are like this. They're counted, they're possible to be developed, but they're not, many of them are not really viable. We have approximately 250, this, you know, this, not the exact number, but approximately 250 units on these types of properties that are vacant, currently zoned residential properties. So that was one of the reasons why in our housing element, we committed to doing this infill work and to upzoning certain areas and had all those opportunity zones identified. Because yeah, it's just, it's really tough right now, and the developers are getting more and more creative. We just recently got a proposal for, let me orient here, a proposal for this project here, sorry, on Westwood Court. So here's, you know, here's Alliance, here's Westwood Court, Janes Creek runs through here. There used to be a nice little shortcut. You could ride your bike through here on your way to wherever. That's been cut off. But there's an apartment complex, pretty big apartment complex on the backside of Westwood Court. Here's Stewart Avenue, just to orient you, and this is where Murphy's is, just north here. So we received a recent application, Planning Commission will be reviewing it sometime soon, for, I believe it's close to 100 new units on this property. So really challenging site that, you know, has, you know, existing built environment, just trying to shoehorn, literally shoehorn, you know, projects in. But that's one of the biggest projects that we have going on right now is a proposal for 100 units that's in the planning process.
What's the name of that project?
I can't remember. This is the Westwood Apartments.
Is it affordable? It's going to be affordable housing?
No, this is market rate.
Does that site back up onto the land that Danco got their development approval on?
It does. This is the Creekside project here, just to the west of this project here. So yeah, we're, you know, we are sort of, in many regards, you know, pretty built out. I'll share with you another set of properties, just so I'm not leaving you with the doom and gloom message. These properties right here on Stewart Court, just right across the way, those are readily developable. If someone were to come in and, you know, propose a project tomorrow, you know, we could, you know, readily approve that. They could have, I think under current zoning, you know, four to six units on those properties. So there are several parcels like this that are, you know, basically vacant and ready to be developed. But certainly with, you know, 250 as our, you know, our count, with some of them being, you know, rather hard to develop, you know, there's a real need for upzoning and rezoning to accommodate our current housing element cycle of 610 and our future housing element cycles that will certainly come and, you know, manage that growth.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? All right. So thank you. That was really helpful for all of us, especially when we're talking about the Gateway next time. So do we have any correspondence or communications?
The only thing I had, my colleague Joe Matier wanted me to pass on, that he's been working with a group of students with the Polytech on a project where they've been looking at Green Burial. And so they'd like to come and present that to the Planning Commission, and we're planning to do that on May 10. And so, you know, those Polytech students are always willing to take on a planning challenge. This is certainly one of them. So we're looking forward to sharing that with you.
That sounds great. I love it. So if there's anything else, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Oh, whoops. I take back the adjournment.
Sorry about that. I do have a question. A couple of months ago, I'm losing count of how many meetings, I had asked if the city could give us a briefing on the city's planning and regulatory authority over land that is owned off-campus by either, at that time it was HSU, now it's Cal Poly, by the Humboldt State Foundation, or by the Humboldt Real Estate Holding Corporation. That was before they announced that they're already looking for a design-build proposal for the Craftsman's Mall, and there are several other properties that are also important in that respect. And now that we're kind of at crunch time and it appears that the university is actually going to select someone to develop that plan, I think the Planning Commission really, really needs to know where the city stands legally on those types of properties. So if there's any way that we can get a really good briefing, possibly from the city's legal counsel, that would be very helpful. When I was looking into it, there are all kinds of links that separate those land-holding entities from the university that's actually controlled by the California State University's legislation, and they were set up deliberately to shelter those entities from those laws. And so it's super confusing for a non-lawyer to try and unravel exactly who can claim that they are exempt from the city's planning and regulatory authority on which land. And that's something right now I think we really need to know. Also, if they are exempt, are there any ways that the city can actually have a very direct influence and effect on decisions about that land? Is there any idea when that might be coming to us?
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, am still trying to prepare that and then also coordinate with HSU to have a representative who can speak to the Planning Commission as well. So I don't have a timeline on that yet, but I am working on it, and thank you for the reminder.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.